Thank goodness.
We have a quorum.
We definitely have a quorum. So I would like to call this to order. This is the Harwich Planning Board meeting of the fourteenth of September, 2021. This meeting will be held in person and may be available as a live broadcast on Channel 18. Members of the public with an interest in any portion or specific item on the agenda, obviously should have been here already. According to Massachusetts law, anyone who intends to record the meeting must first notify the chair, will then inform the other attendees at the start of the meeting. Does anybody care to record? I was also just informed that the law is that if you, for the board members, if you don't wish to wear a mask, you don't have to. If you want to, you can.
Because we're socially distant.
Because we have the distance already set up at the table. So they're taped off. So for those of you who want to, I think I'll join you. So I've been wearing one of these things all day up in Boston, so. So would you please rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. So now the public meeting section of the program this evening is new business. Item number one is PB 2021-18. The London's Safe and Adequate Access Determination with Nathan Walker Road, Cherokee Road intersection. It looks like we have Councillor Kroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Attorney William Kroll from Howard's Court. Good to see everybody. Hopefully, we won't be masked for too long. I have Michael London and Emily, his wife Emily Friedman, with me this evening. And they've been working on this project for quite some time. And they're looking for determination of safe and adequate access from you this evening. I've talked with Mr. Idman several times about this. And I think it would be best to minimize my, any presentation and just rely on what Mr. Idman has to say and what's already been filed.
Mr. Idman.
That's good with me, yeah. And I prepared a staff report for you as well, so hopefully you've referred to that already. I'm just going to stand up so I don't shoot Bill with a laser here and orient you to where we are. This is basically Nathan Walker Drive, Nathan Walker Road as it goes through and almost goes to Hoxness, the Hoxness State Forest area. This is Jay-Z Drive, which comes off Queen Anne Road. And Nathan Walker Road is essentially, you know, it preexisted Jay-Z Drive, but it's essentially laid out, at least to that point, in the same area. This is town property, goes over the town property. There's a spur off Sammaset Road there, which is an improved townway that leads up to Nathan Walker Road as well. Then it meanders and traverses the building lot here, goes over, this is another big town property, and eventually goes north. And we don't see it here, but it goes all the way to Spruce Road. This is an old road in the town that predates subdivision control, predates zoning. Nathan Walker Road refers to the road to Nathan Walker's. Nathan Walker's homestead was just south of Walker's Pond in the nineteenth century. So a lot of history, a lot of history there. And we're here tonight for the Planning Board to determine whether that road, given its character, provides safe and adequate access for the single-family residential building lot that the London's want out there. That lot you see is currently undeveloped. Adequate lot frontage and access comes under scrutiny when there are proposed to be new building lots created, such as with a subdivision or an A&R plan, or under a building permit application for developing an existing raw building lot, like you have in this case. Little analysis is needed if the access and frontage is often improved public or private subdivision way, but consideration and review is important in the case of access and frontage often unimproved way, like Nathan Walker Road, that has not been laid out through the subdivision law or through town meeting, in this case, in ancient way. It's unique to the Harwich subdivision rules and regulations to vest this authority in the determination in the Planning Board whether safe and adequate access exists for a building lot that has not previously been built on. The Planning Board has this authority, and moreover, has the authority to condition its safe and adequate access determination if it feels the current configuration really isn't up to snuff, but with some further work, the road might. In this particular case, we did get comments from all the relevant town departments, police, fire, water, conservation, and so on. None of them recommended that anything be done to the road. They thought the road provided safe and adequate access. I confirmed that by going out to the site myself. The proposed access from the site is off of the end of Sammaset Road, which I said again is a paved townway. It does go over the big town fifteen-acre conservation lands, ultimately goes to the single lot, which is bisected by Nathan Walker Road. That's kind of another interesting, unique point of this. It's a single building lot, but Nathan Walker Road goes right through it, which is kind of a testament to how old that road is, that you just wouldn't see that kind of setup today. There is technically municipal water service that could be extended to the site. It's on the end of Sammaset Road. But I think the London's have already applied for a well permit, and they're proposing to do well water on that site, and that seems appropriate out there. Of course, they'll do onsite septic, there's no sewer being brought out there. They do have to run electric utilities, and that kind of tips my, the point I'll end with. My recommendation is that you find that this is safe and adequate access for a single-family residential use. In my staff report, I suggested a few conditions, however. One of them is that where Nathan Walker Road traverses the site, that it be maintained at a cleared height and width of at least sixteen feet, and that it be graded and maintained with a gravel surface of at least twelve feet in width. And secondly, which would be frankly required for the building permit anyway, that they provide electric service and agreements and the necessary easements to bring electric out there when they, you know, when they're going through the building permit process. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's my presentation for you for now.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Chadwick?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Is the property currently flagged? I was out there the other day trying to find a couple for sale signs on either side. Okay, thank you.
I had one comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. London and Ms. Friedman are starting a family and want to build their house out here. This is where they want to be. And they have a plan for accomplishing that. I've known Mr. London, he's a reputable builder. He and my son went to Cub Scouts together. His father was the pack leader. Mark London, who's also a builder. And so they've been around a long time in town and have chosen this site. As far as electric is concerned, Michael tells me that there is electric already running through the lot.
Okay.
And he just, he's been working with the representative from Eversource to file all the necessary paperwork to have that. But one of the catch-22s with Eversource is they won't do anything until, and commit until you own the property.
Right.
And then if all the paperwork is in order, then they'll connect. And he's applied to have a transformer on the lot to connect with the electrical service that's already there. So that's, we wouldn't be able to have, in order to, we may not be able to have, for building permit purposes, anything from Eversource to say, yes, you can have electric. It may be we have to close, buy the property.
Right.
Get the building permit, and then they say, okay, now we'll provide you with electrical service. Which is, you know, we'd rather have it the other way around, but they're the electric company.
Right. I think it can easily be pushed, that requirement, to a certificate of occupancy. And they're not going to move there anyway unless they have electric service, unless they're going to do some major. I don't even think it can be off the grid in Massachusetts, so that's out, too.
So it must have it before a CO?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Any other questions, issues, concerns? Seems pretty straightforward.
So that being said, I would move that the Planning Board makes a determination and communicates to the Building Department that Nathan Walker Road at Zero Cherokee Road provides safe and adequate access, that safe and adequate access exists to the property for the proposed single-family residential use, subject to the following conditions. One, that Nathan Walker Road, as it crosses the subject property, shall be maintained by the property owners with a cleared area of at least sixteen feet of width and height and a graded gravel surface of at least twelve feet wide. And two, that the property owners provide necessary easements and utility agreements for site electric service to the Building Department prior to the issuance, or prior to the application for a certificate of occupancy for the proposed residence. Does that work?
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously, congratulations.
Wish you well, good luck.
Second item of business, a public meeting for PB 2021-19 at 56 Riverside Drive Associates LLC. This is an A&R for Fairbanks Drive slash the Lower County Road intersection. Mr. Sweetser, good to see you this evening. How are you?
I'm doing fine, how are you doing?
Great.
It's a pleasure to be here for a change, you know, it's nice. The last time I think I did anything, it was all remote, and I heard this guy on there saying, okay, you know, I want to read people's faces, but I can't do it over the phone. So what you have in front of you is basically a two-lot subdivision. And what it has is frontage on Lower County Road, and it has plenty of area. And actually, I made sure that it actually met the catch-22 formula, which I don't believe it actually really had to do with, I made sure that it did anyhow.
Great.
Simple A&R. Any questions?
I represent the current owner.
Okay.
Trying to sell the property to the buyer who wants to have this plan approved. So that's my involvement.
So it's Kent Murphy is the owner?
Mm-hmm.
Or the manager of the?
Right, this one.
Yeah. Fifty-six Riverside Drive Associates LLC. And Ronald Buck is the guy that's buying one of the lots, and he's paying for the whole schmeel.
Okay. I'm familiar with it. Why don't we first see what?
Sure.
Here from the planner.
Okay, I'm going to get up again here. These are the lots we're talking about. This one, this one, and there's a little sliver there. At the heart of this lot was a kind of a pre-existing lot that came out of the subdivision, and through some reasons unique to the Harwich zoning bylaw, it lost its zoning status. So this lot had enough area to allow them to convey to this lot. This now has enough area, this has enough area. More importantly for the A&R analysis, both these affected building lots are left with the frontage as required under the zoning district. It's a hundred fifty feet, this is like one ninety, and this is two hundred plus, two eleven, as I can see from here. So that's what satisfies the A&R statutory requirements, that the affected lots are remained with the frontage as required in the zoning district. Interestingly, there was this little sliver along Fairbanks Drive, went there. That was incorporated in this lot, that's the sliver that was there, it was incorporated in here. And here, this just gives these people, well, you know, the Murphys also own this lot. This was a pre-existing developed lot, so this gives them the option to incorporate this in, but doesn't necessarily do it in this plan. So if they ever wanted to do that, they could put a plan on record if necessary, but at least this gives them the option, this aligns with that lot line, so it would be a natural kind of supplement to that lot. But my recommendation would be that this does not show a subdivision and warrants an A&R endorsement.
Great. Joe, I know you had a question.
I just want to, so when we're said and done here, we'll end up with two lots, is that right?
That's correct.
One of them forty thousand square feet?
Forty-two.
Okay, and what's the other one?
The other one is fifty, oh, wait a second, you got the?
Forty-nine plus. It says forty-nine, but then you're talking about where the garage is, so.
We had a revision on the plan, so.
Yeah.
Can I borrow this for a minute?
Oh, sure, yeah, let me explain the revision, too. There was a, when the plan was originally filed, this sliver was shown continuously to the north of those lots. This is where you see the A&R now kind of being submitted by both the owner and the potential buyer. There is some advantage to incorporating this land into this lot, which the current owner will maintain and reserve and will convey this one. So the change that was made today, revised plan date September fourteenth, incorporates the former sliver directly into this lot and creates this lot line, so you have this sliver now that could be incorporated in this kind of pre-existing built lot. That was the change today.
That's true.
So what you had was Lot One is forty-two thousand square feet, and Lot Two is fifty-one thousand six hundred ninety-seven square feet.
Yes. Could I just refer you to the Planning Director? Could I just see the block so that I can amend the motion? You have the correct information for approving the block?
Bring you one of the paper copies. It's September fourteenth.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Can you tell me again what the size of each lot's going to be?
Lot number one is forty-two thousand square feet, Lot Number Two is fifty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-seven square feet, going off the top of my head.
And two will include both, what we're seeing is two lots here on the plan. One has a garage on it and one has a shed on it?
That's not, that's not one of two.
I think we misspoke, Joe, so let me clarify that.
I got you.
There's actually three lots here, but one is a pre-existing developed lot. That's the pre-existing developed lot. And there may be, are there more structures on that anyway?
There isn't, there is a house on that.
So it doesn't represent the exact?
But this house was far enough away from the property lines that it didn't need to be shown.
One of the surveyors.
And this piece right here.
I love it. Yeah, anything to get out of work. I see there's another surveyor here, he really banged this.
Yes, we brought that up from the basement today.
That wasn't the Board of Selectmen meeting last night?
Well, it could have been.
It could have been.
So, no, all of a sudden? Any other, any other comments?
Ready for motion?
Yeah, I'm ready for motion, are we ready for motion?
So I move that the plan entitles Planet Land in West Harwich, Massachusetts, as prepared for 56 Riverside Drive Associates LLC, Kent D. Murphy manager, and Ronald Buck by Paul E. Sweetser, PLS, Dennisport, Mass., dated August fifth, 2021, and revised September fourteenth, 2021, and stamped, I'm assuming, September fourteenth, 2021?
Oh, yes, yeah. I can vouch for that, because I did it.
Does not, I'm sorry, scale equal, scale one inch equals fifty feet, does not depict a subdivision, and that the board endorsed the plan, is not requiring approval under the subdivision control law.
Second.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, none? Thank you, good to see you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
And we can pass, if you want to wait for a second, we can pass this, great.
I think there's two pieces of paper, two papers and a Mylar.
You only need the blank pen on the Mylar, right?
Yeah, yeah, you could use it for either, but we absolutely need it on the Mylar.
Give me this in just a sec.
Okay.
I just need the pen for the, I'm thinking.
Maybe I better start citing senior, because my son's on, yeah.
Joe, I have to tell you, I walked into a room meeting your son, and he said, hi, I'm Joe McCarland, I said, no, you aren't.
Not the first time that's happened to him.
He's a, he's a great guy.
He's a fine young man.
Yeah.
That's three years ago.
Yeah, not yet.
Now a retired lieutenant colonel from the Army.
Oh, okay.
Just finished up.
Well, he sounds like he wants to stay very busy.
He does, he does, and he is.
Somebody retired?
What, no, 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 no. Well, he retired from the Army, but.
Joe needs to sign that one.
Okay.
Which one?
I guess we're going to do three. We'll give a paper back to.
I'm sorry, I confused, I made three copies, large size.
Very generous.
I had one with the Land Court, like twenty, twenty, twenty-five years ago, that I filed the linen with the Land Court.
Yeah.
And property in Dennis. They finally got to it, twenty years later, and the engineering department called me up, the guy says, you need the Dennis Planning Board to sign the plan.
Oh, my gosh.
They did sign the plan. I've got a copy of it right here, and I got their signatures. He says, there's no signatures.
The ink's evaporated off the linen?
It evaporated, and we finally figured it out, because I thought he was lying, he thought I was lying. And.
Too much.
So he said, you got to go back to the Dennis Planning Board and get them to re-sign the plan, because the sun, they're sitting on the shelf, the sun evaporated the ink right off the linen.
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
That can happen.
Crazy.
Yeah, that was new on me.
I've seen that happen too many times.
Never seen that happen.
The guy says, I'm telling you right now, there's no signature.
That's another whole problem that we have to worry about when it comes to preserving the old plan.
There you go, there's your copy.
John, we didn't check outside.
You've got to wonder what's going to be the case in like fifty years with the PDFs, you know, because they degenerate, there's a kind of, they degenerate, something like JPGs degenerate.
It would have been the paper one that I missed.
Yeah. Well, even the digital, I'm saying the digital stuff could, it could be, because if you don't have the media to read it, you know, gosh, crazy.
It is very good. Yeah. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Thank you, gents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So next item is approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Was that the meeting where Arthur left? That was Arthur's last meeting, I think.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of August twenty-fourth, 2021.
We have a motion, we have a motion in the second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? And the next item for advisory opinions, the Historic District and Historical Commission's item here, I guess, John, you'll tell us about?
I think I'll defer to Mary on the HDHC stuff.
Okay, okay.
For zoning board of appeals, there was nothing really out of the ordinary.
Okay.
So just, I mean, there's just two applications for demolition, applications under the demolition delay bylaw. One is two called Bank Street, which looks like it's just replacing and presumably it's something slightly more than just like-for-like.
How far up is, how far up is two twelve? Is that like toward Hemians, or?
Yeah, I think so.
It's got to be pretty far up there.
I think it's about halfway up.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's definitely not on the other, it's not on the ocean side. And then notice of intent for thirty-six Cross Street, which is a hundred percent demolition of a garage.
Got you, okay.
So our hearings on that are tomorrow, so if the Planning Board wanted to comment, then we would need comments today.
No comment.
Comment.
And our demolition delay bylaw is, will not be on the fall time meeting, so hopefully it'll be on the spring.
That's to extend it.
What, you need a?
Yes, to, we propose provisions to the demolition delay bylaw, so.
What are, just roughly, what are the changes?
They were changing it to eighteen months from twelve primarily, and then providing some penalties if you demolished without approval, so a two-year.
I'm surprised you don't have them now.
Yep, so if you demolished without it, one of the proposals is two years.
You'd have to wait two years?
Yep.
Yeah, makes sense.
A little teeth in it, great.
I would love to work with your board as well and maybe come up with a definition of demolition, because a lot comes in, argue if you take out a square foot of structure, that's demolition.
Exactly.
And it's been inconsistent sending it to the.
That's been our complaint all the way through, and that's why I've, since I've been chair, I've said, anytime you're doing anything, even if it's technically interior demolition, that is not defined as exterior. So, you know, we had someone come in one time that wanted to add a garage, but they had to cut a door in the, what was the existing exterior wall, which would be an interior door inside the garage going into the house, and that was still demolition. So, would love to do that.
I think you can find something reasonably protective, you know, in furtherance of the spirit of the regulation, but still give some clarity, especially town staff, about how that's to be administered.
Sarah Corduff worked with one of our former board members to kind of get it drafted the way it is, and then we, because of COVID, it wasn't on the spring town meeting, and again, because of COVID, I think it's not going to be on the, on the fall special, but hopefully we can have some, some further meetings and discussions and really get some public involvement to, to sharpen it for approval in the spring. I think that actually gives us time to do it.
Mary, wouldn't we want to have the building inspector in?
Of course.
And he has a committee, what's that committee that Dr. Gallo's on?
Well, there's the, there's the building code board. Well, there's the, there's the building code board of appeals that you can have locally. We don't currently have one impaneled. But we also don't have a building commissioner currently.
No, he left?
What happened?
Yeah, he, he's gone.
Moved on?
He's gone.
So we currently do not have a building inspector?
We have a build, local building inspector, but not a building commissioner. That has been advertised, so it's.
Now, is the building inspector a, that's not a full-time job, is it?
Oh, yeah.
It is a full-time job, but there are certain credentials or authority that only the building commissioner has, but the building inspector does not have.
So in the absence of a commissioner?
He's gone. He's gone.
Yeah.
What happens?
Do whatever you want.
No, so the building inspector can do all those things that, except the things that a building commissioner can't. That's why they've advertised to, to get somebody in.
But, but in, but in the absence of one, is it just stole the workflow for whoever's got?
We do have the Chatham, yeah, we have the Chatham building commissioner in now on a one-day-a-week basis to do the things that the local inspector can't do.
Okay. Like issue licenses?
You know, there are.
Permits, I shouldn't say.
Can they issue permits?
They can issue permits, but they can't, I, I don't believe they can do some of the commercial work the bill, chief building commissioner can do. They have some jurisdiction under zoning, but it's just, they don't have the same credentials and thus they can't do some of the same issuance of permits under the building code.
That was a change that was probably almost 20 years ago, I would think by now, when they changed the building inspector to a building commissioner.
Yeah.
So in the meantime, what happens?
Well, as a department, you know, we're all pitching in and Joe is, Joe, you know, town administrator is helping with it. And we have, you know, the Chatham building commissioner in one day a week to do those things that the local building inspector here cannot do.
And he can do that even though he's not a?
We have an, we have an MOU with Chatham.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can do anything short term. We have an agreement, right?
You know, that demolition issue is real touching. I've been through it before. If somebody goes in and sands the floor to refinish the floor, technically you consider that sawdust demolition.
Yeah.
Crazy. That'd be some sort of an exception to be approved.
Yeah.
Like the cutting the door opening.
Yeah.
Fortunately, the available building lots, buildable lots I should use, not building, but buildable lots in Harwich are starting to.
Taper off.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
The fewer of them there are, the more of them there appear to be.
And the greater the urgency.
There are more than you think there are.
Is that right, Mary? Yeah?
I think there are more than you think there are, when push comes to shove.
Lot in, on, on the east side of town?
Probably. Prices on the east side of town have been pretty high lately.
Oh, I've noticed. I am.
Joe, that red house on Miles that's been abandoned for years or it looks like it?
On the corner?
No, it's, it's.
It's sold. I think I saw.
I saw for sales, a sold sign on it, but there's, it's not there now. I know it's a tear down and.
I think it's old.
All right. Do we have any old business?
Your neighborhood, I thought you might know.
Just, my only comment is that as the CPC will start meeting, applications will do October 1st. So anything that would, any application that might need planning board support, I believe we voted that it needed, that the board support needs to happen by December 1st. So you may see some requests come through the department for getting on our agenda.
Getting on your agenda or the planning board?
Yeah, okay.
And as I understand the change now, all town CPC requests are running through the town administrator's office.
Right. That was my understanding as well.
Wait till we adjourn.
Do we have any further business before the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you all.